To be thankful for everything and we're very blessed to be here tonight at a special town meeting, so at this time I would ask Anita, our town clerk, to read the warrant, please.
Not the warrant. Just the word. "To either of the constables of the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester." Can you hear me? "In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Naqog Elementary School Auditorium at 285 Main Street in Sed, Rutland on Monday, the 19th day of November 2018 at 6:30 PM o'clock in the evening, there and then to vote on the following articles."
At this time, I'd like everybody to rise and will salute the flag. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, anterior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all." So, everybody should have a pink card that is voting, that is directly in front of me. Our guests tonight are going to be behind the cameras over here. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and you should be using both mics, one is the school and one is for the cable. Just, there are two new faces up here that I wouldn't... Town Council is sitting directly beside Anita tonight, our normal one had another situation she was dealing with, and beside him is our temporary interim town manager that's trying to fill Margaret's shoes. Well, to the nicest way, I mean, I didn't mean that negatively, Bob. We're off to a good start anyways, folks, so, alright, we'll get started. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to the town OPEB trust fund, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $31,229 from free cash to the town's OPEB trust fund.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, and recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Lou Carnacchioli, 18 Blueberry Lane, it would be nice if, when they read the article, let they explain where the money is going, OP, whatever. I really don't understand what that is, I should probably, but I don't, and why we're putting $31,000. It would avoid people like me from coming up asking questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnacchioli.
OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And the reason why we're putting this money in is because we have a outstanding liability. I don't know the exact amount at this point, and we're trying to offset that in little drips and drabs instead of having to do it all at once.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to the town stabilization fund, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $31,229 from free cash to the town's stabilization fund.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Yes.
I guess I'm getting real old and I don't make myself understood. Could you please explain why the 31, the purpose of the $31,000? What's the purpose of doing it, what do you hope it accomplishes? Simple answers, that's all. I'm a simple man.
The stabilization fund is, in simple terms, a rainy day fund, so that we would have funds put aside for rainy days.
So, why just $31,000?
Because there's not a plethora of money available, and that's what our financial goals are, so that's the reason why.
One more question, what's the stabilization fund now, if the $31,000 goes into?
I do not have that figure.
Does anyone have that figure, Mr. Moderator?
Just to answer...
Oh.
Yeah? While Dan's going to the mic, just to answer Louis' first question, we have financial management policies that kind of prod us towards giving 5% in the fall, in the assumption that we have free cash available, to each of three savings accounts.
When the selectmen speak, we've got to come up here to speak, because we don't have an in-house mic. Same with everybody here. You haven't heard anybody?
Okay.
So, Mr. Carnacchioli asked a question, you heard that, in regards to what stabilization was. Ms. Norwell said that, which is the finance board here, stated that it was more or less a rainy day, I found. He had a follow-up question stating about how much money was there. She said something that I wasn't necessarily listening to, but he's going to answer it, but she was listening, okay? Dan is a town accountant, he is not from town, if I'm not mistaken, but he has my permission to speak freely of stabilization account, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After we put this money in, it'll be just over $931,000.
$931,000 is what he said.
Very good, good job, Dan.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 3, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund, or take any action there, too. If you're making a motion, please come up here.
The town's capital stabilization fund is the rainy day fund that we have in order to purchase large capital goods that someday would be recommended by the capital improvement committee. Mr. Moderator, I move the town's vote to approve the sum of $31,229 from free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund.
Does this motion receive support? Recommendation of the finance.
The finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I favor this, I'd just like to know if we put the $31,000, what that stabilization fund will go up to? I think that's information we as town speakers should know. I'm surprised, I was glad to hear we all have almost a million dollars in the other fund. Very good.
Can I state it from here?
Why, certainly, if you speak loudly, and I'll repeat it if they don't hear it.
$118,000.
$118,000 in the capital stabilization fund. Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, and such sums of money as may be necessary to restore all or a portion of the amount reduced by the May 12, 2018 annual town meeting, under Article 8, to the amounts less than recommended for the expenses of the municipal department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $84,293.12 from free cash to supplement the amounts appropriated under Article 8 of the May 12, 2018 annual town meeting, as specified in the handout entitled Fiscal Year 19 Municipal Budget Restoration, Article 4A.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
The finance committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 4B. I apologize, the last one was 4A. This is 4B, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, such sums of money as may be necessary to add to the amounts appropriate under Article 8 of the May 12, 2018 annual town meeting, to defray the expenses of the municipal department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $58,014 to supplement the amounts appropriated under Article 8 of the May 12, 2018 annual town meeting, to defray the expenses of municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, as specified in the handout entitled Fiscal Year 19 Municipal Budget Supplement, Article 4B.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? He's first, she'll second. Please state your name and address, please.
Lou Carnacchioli, 18 Blueberry Lane. I applaud the town that we're giving back the money to the town administrative police department and the public works, I didn't think they should have taken a cut, but that's great, it's going back, but I'm perplexed, I was at the annual town meeting, I don't understand, number one, under 4B, fund plan for town hall annex moved to community hall, $15,000. I don't, what does that mean? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Just to review, 4A, and we thank you for approving it, makes whole the amount of money that was cut on the floor of the May town meeting. 4B, we divided out specifically at the recommendation of the finance committee, because these were not items that were there in May, so these are new items that are being added to our general government budget since the May town meeting, and if you look, there was a handout, you should have it, it's the FY19 Municipal Budget Recommendations, Article B document, and what Mr. Carnacchioli is referencing is the first item. What you need to know is that we have had a bit of conversation about the possibility of expanding our regional dispatch. The more towns we add to regional dispatch, the lower the cost to each town, however, we have hit our limit when it comes to space available in our existing public safety building, and it is time for us to do a little bit of research to find out what our options are, as far as where they can be moved. That includes the possibility of moving them to the annex, where the building departments and the board of selectmen currently are, so that amount of money will fund a feasibility study to see if that is a possibility.
Is there any... Mr. Becker? You're all set. Is there any other discussion?
Rachel Dolan, Ware Road. I understand lumping this all together, but it's common practice in this town at town meeting, usually it's broken out, you're kind of making the voters vote an all or nothing by lumping it all together, which is not common practice in what this town does. I don't necessarily have an issue with any of these in particular items, but again, you're taking the voter's ability away to make an informed choice for each, because these are additional to the budget, not making the budget whole, which we just voted on. So, for that, on that principle alone, I really have a problem with the mechanics of the way this article was presented to the town.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 5, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $69,000 for the purchase of equipment, a holder tractor for the highway department, or take any action in relation there, too.
What's a holder tractor? You better explain that to me.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $69,000 for the purchase and equip of a holder tractor for the highway department.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $15,000 to fund legal and land court fees for the necessary foreclosure of 17 parcels currently in tax title, or take other number of parcels as may be in tax title from time to time, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $15,000 to fund legal and land court fees necessary for the foreclosure of parcels currently in tax title, or such other parcels as may be in tax title from time to time.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the finance, please.
The finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, through you, sir, Lou Carnacchioli, does this mean we're going to go after these, finally go after some of these tax delinquents who have not paid taxes in a long time? Is that the purpose of this $15,000? If so, I applaud you.
Her answer is yes, she's the town treasurer, and Mr. Carnacchioli's question was answered yes.
Mr. Moderator, Harry Sekman, 13 Beachwood Drive, could we get the information of approximately how much taxes on those 17 parcels we are missing? What's the taxes that have been accrued or in arrears, if at all?
I'm going to use that. I don't know if I can speak loud enough. Yeah. So, just to give a little background, there are 116 parcels currently right now in tax title. This isn't fixing, isn't, the 17 that we're talking about fixing are already in tax title. The recording of their instruments of taking were done past the 60-day mark, so we need to go and advertise them and correct some of the legal documents for those properties. There's 116 in there right now, I think actually in November there was 123, so we are making progress. We just, we've had a lot of legal fees involved with one of the bigger properties in town that we've, going through bankruptcy court with, and this will supplement those and be able, so we'll be able to put more into tax title, I mean, more into land court to begin the foreclosure process on it.
He asked how many dollars would you potentially recoup in those 17?
I don't have those particulars, that particular amount on that 17. The total tax that's in tax title right now is, on this page, 606, just the tax amount is $662,000.
Of all the parcels?
Of all the parcels, all the 116 that are in there currently.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 7, to see if the town will vote to appropriate available funds, including free cash, the sum of $9,725 to replace fencing at the memorial playground, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $9,725 to replace fencing at the memorial playground, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Hi, Jennifer Klein. Hi, Donovan Circle. How many estimates did we get for that? Because that number seems absolutely exorbitant, almost $10,000 for a fence that has been stated isn't necessary for our insurance, so...
Can someone answer this?
Hi, Jen, thank you. We have one bid from a local vendor, we took that as our top end, and the plan moving forward is to do a three-bid typical process, although it is under the limits of procurement. I will say, so the fence that we will need to put in, and you're right, technically according to mass regulations about this, because of its location, it's a little bit of a gray area, it is not on a main street, however, we have had the fence in place for a very long time, people became accustomed to it. We do have questions of security, obviously the fence was ruined in the past, and it's something that we have our public safety building looking at in terms of additional security and cameras in that area. That's not part of this bid, but the $9,000, the just under $10,000 number is going to include a fence that is of similar height to the one we had, but will include a bottom bar, which we didn't have before, and it will help to make a little bit of a better fence. Gary can speak to this better than me as far as the specs go, but it will be a stronger fence than what we had.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 8, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $5,200 for the purchase of a heat and AC unit for the public safety building, including all incidental and related expenses in, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $5,200 for the purchase of a heater, AC unit for the public safety building, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Same sign, all those opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 8, to see if the town will vote to appropriate available funds inclu... Article 9, I was reading Article 9. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $5,000 to upgrade the town's website, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $5,000 from free cash to upgrade the town's website, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Is there a recommendation of the finance, please?
Mr. Moderator, the finance recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. To see, moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $879 for the purchase of a fax/scanner printer for the library, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $879 for the purchase of a fax scanner printer for the library.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $500 to bind and preserve town meeting warrants in minutes. Town reports and street listings, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $500 to bind and preserve town meeting warrants in minutes. Town reports and street lists, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive... Recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the Water Enterprise Fund retaining earnings for the following purpose, including all incidental and related expenses. They're listed, you probably have seen them, I'm going to let them make the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $145,702 from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purpose, purposes set forth in the warrant under Article 12, with the omission of the security fence and the addition of the pump house to the closed-circuit television security system.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion?
Peter Pacer, 20 Hyland Park Road, I'm just wondering, is it, I didn't see, is this coming out of free cash? Or is this...
It's coming out of, it's coming out of Water Enterprise free cash.
Water Enterprise free cash, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 13, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $16,436.62 from the amount appropriated under Article 15 of May 6, 2017 annual town meeting, and the sum of $30,017.74 from Article 7 of the May 9, 2015 special town meeting, for the purpose of paying bills of the prior fiscal year as the follows.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to pay certain bills of prior fiscal years and approve Article 13 as set forth in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Is that a yes, Wayne? Thank you. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? You know he's going to ask it.
What do we owe the conservation and recreation, why do we owe $42,000 and then water resources full time?
So, we do not get our estimates from the D.C.
Yeah, speak louder.
Wrong mic. We don't get our estimates from the DCR when it comes to some of these bills in time for us setting our budget at the May town meeting, so when we set our budget at the May town meeting, it was underfunded by that amount, again, this is for the prior fiscal year, so when the fourth quarter bill came, it was due in that amount, and that was an amount that we did not have in the budget, we needed to appropriate that amount from an article, which in doing some research, Gary found that we had some articles related to water that were expended and finished, but still had balances left, so we are transferring those balances in order... So, we are transferring those balances in order to pay this bill. Obviously, moving forward, we know that, given the opportunity, we need to bump up that budget amount for future budget years.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Kinnock-Hill?
If it's water, if my neighbor gives, if it's water, what, is it coming out of the Water Enterprise? Is it saving?
The answer was yes. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Kelleher just stated sewer.
Sewer, not water.
Sewer, not water.
Sewer, sewer.
Sewer, not water.
That's not what I thought.
That comes from these two articles that we had. That's a running in, and we need to hide in that study, which gave us approximately $45,000, $1,000 less than we did. And the other was the leftover ones in the forest, built Christmas tree playing, designing any areas for the city on the road.
Did everybody hear Mr. Kelleher, who is a DPW boss?
Also, I'll add, I'm sorry. So, as Sheila, first time, when you get the bills from the DCR, you don't worry about it. It's for their last quarter of service, however, if you get the bills, you can argue crystal you're just starting. It comes too late to call in the inconveniences. So, this is just a problem we've had for the last couple of years. So, Sheila was saying that, right, you did it too late, you got the wrong projections of what you put into the budget. And that's why we have to...
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 14, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and enter into a tax agreement or agreements for payment in lieu of taxes, pilot pursuant to the provisions of GLC 59, Section 38 HB and GLC 164, Section 1, or take other enabling authorities on such terms and conditions for the sum term up to, up to or in excess of 20 years that may be negotiated with the Board of Selectmen for the personal and/or real estate association with solar renewable generation of a facility to be installed and operated on the following. You have those listed in front of you of A and B.
Speaking to the left mic. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and enter into a tax agreement or agreements for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 38 HB, and General Law, Chapter 164, Section 1, and any other enabling authority on such terms and conditions, and for such term up to or in excess of 20 years, as may be negotiated by the Board of Selectmen, for personal and/or real property associated with solar renewable energy generation facilities to be installed and operated on the following. A, town-owned property located on Wheeler Road, shown on parcel 059-A-1 on the Rutland Assessors Maps, and on Central Tree Road, shown as parcel 059-A-12 on the Rutland Assessors Maps. And B, public property under the control of the Rutland Development and Industrial Commission, located on Maple Avenue, shown as parcel 041-A-03 and parcel 041-A-3.01 on the Rutland Assessors Maps, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute all documents and take all actions necessary to carry out the vote taken hereunder.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I was accused at the last meeting, when I sat close, of threatening...
Pay attention and talk to me, please.
Yes, I am. Sorry, I had to answer.
That's fine, it's...
Again, it sounds great, but there's no explanation as to exactly what we're getting. Are people coming here to start a solar farm? I noticed we have one going up down near your farm, across the street from where your farm is, Mr. Moderator. So, what's this all about? Could you, somebody just explain it to us so that we all, maybe everybody understands and not everyone doesn't.
The town has issued an RFP and is in negotiations with a solar firm for the construction of the solar farm on both of these parcels. This is to, since it's town-owned property, part of the process is to negotiate a tax agreement with the firm for not only the use of the property, but also for the equipment that's mentioned here, the energy generation facilities and so forth that are going to be on the property. So, this is all part of the process. Town meeting approval is needed to authorize the Selectmen to enter into this agreement and to negotiate the pilot payments with the firm.
Darren Unfrick, 14 Wheeler Road. Can we see a map of parcel 059-A-12? I live on Wheeler Road, and I have no idea where this is.
That's not a handout we would have been able to bring with us, just because of the size of the Assessors Maps, although I suppose we could have given you a small one, hard to read. If you have your phone with you, there is free Wi-Fi in the building. It's actually something you can look up from the town site, so you can get a sense of what the parcel looks like.
I tried to do that, but it was, it was very difficult. And plus, I don't think you can expect everyone here to vote on that, not knowing where that, you know, not knowing where that is. I can't pass myself one around. Okay, so that's the first question. Second question is, is the land part of the Mushapog Watershed Protection District?
It is not. So, the land in question is town-owned property. In fact, some of it in the past, I believe, has been haved, and we are working with a solar consultant who has not, wasn't able to be with us here tonight. I know your questions are very specific to Wheeler, but I think then, somebody from the RDIC could probably speak more clearly to the parcel that involves the Heights property as well.
Okay, so I guess I...
I don't think that answers.
Yeah, it doesn't really, but I think, I would ask that we table this to the next meeting, in which you would actually have a map showing where this parcel of land is.
You'd have to make an amendment if you choose to do that. Motion to table it? Well, if he wants to do that, he can...
I'm motioning to table it. I'll do whatever amendment you need me to do.
Does, does this receive support? We have a map over here, if that helps you, before you make your motion, but there is a motion, and I have to work on a motion.
I think everyone would want to check that map before they made a decision on whether they want to vote or not.
So, just clarification on what his motion is. It's to table this motion. There's no discussion on it, and it's a two-thirds vote. So, we'll take the process of voting on it now. If it passes two-thirds, then it's, it's tabled until further discussion later.
I think the only thing I wanted to mention that is, at the next meeting, we actually have a map that everyone can see where this...
It's not discussionable, so...
What's that?
You can't discuss it now. So, you have to wait. We understand your point, but you have to wait. So, we're going to vote. Mr. Senical, would you mind voting, counting on this side for me?
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Jarvie, would you mind counting on this side for me? It's, Mr. Santa-Moore, would you count the bleachers behind you? Okay, shouldn't be too hard. Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your cards and wait to be counted.
In favor of the motion?
No, favoring, just tabling it. Sorry, that should have been clarified. Thank you, Mr. Kinnock. All those in favor of table it, please raise your cards.
I got the aisle.
Yeah, hey, Kevin, he's got the aisle. Thank you. All those opposed, same sign, please. If you said it, I ain't going to... We're working on our math up here right now, thank you. There were 76 yeses, 31 no's, so this article has passed and will be tabled. It is tabled. So now, we don't talk about this article anymore. We move on, correct? So, this article, we're not discussing anymore. So, we are moving on to Article 15. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease for recreation purposes approximately eight acres of land located at 65 Glenwood Road, shown as Block A, Lot 15 on the Rutland Assessors Map, 15 for the term of 10 years, with additional 10-year term with the authorization of town meeting, and on such other terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, and to execute instrument, including leases and notices therefore, and to take such other actions as may be necessary to facilitate the purpose of the article, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease for recreation purposes approximately eight acres of land located at 65 Glenwood Road, shown as Block A, Lot 15 on the Rutland Assessors Map, 15, for the term of 10 years, with an additional 10-year term with authorization, with authorization of town meeting, and such terms and conditions that the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, and execute instrument, including leases, notifications therefore, and to take such action as may be necessary to execute for the purpose of this article.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance?
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Just I should state that I am a member of the Ag Commission, and the Ag Commission did speak in regard to this article in our things, but I just want to make it clear that I am a member of that.
Full disclosure.
He's in front of you.
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. Jason DeStratus, from 20 Arrowline Drive. I've been on the board for Rutland Youth Soccer for the last five years. As a leader for Rutland Youth Soccer, I've been charging our board to remember that we're a recreational sports program for every kid here in the town of Rutland. So, sure, we do our best to make great soccer players, but the real value to the community is that we're open to everyone, to enjoy, and for our kids to learn the value of teamwork. I'm here tonight to ask for your vote for additional recreational space adjacent to the Glenwood Elementary School. There's a long list of benefits, including alleviating, alleviating current field space needs for soccer in the fall and spring seasons. In turn, other sports programs in the community will have more access to fields currently in use. We also need fields with better drainage. We'd like a central hub for our youth soccer program, and we see this as an opportunity to provide additional parking and community field space to the Glenwood Elementary property. I'm proud to say that the Rutland Youth Soccer Volunteers are a dedicated bunch of people, and we are prepared to properly respond to an RFP by the town of Rutland to lease this field space. Thank you for your time and for your vote here tonight.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article?
Kevin Jarvie, 80 Hillside Road. I'm just curious if...
Yeah, speak louder.
This one?
Just speak louder, that's all.
I'm just curious if, and what other areas or parcels had been looked at previous to the Glenwood parcel, and if there was thoughts, or if it's possible, if we're taking what is now hayfield, which is food for somebody's farm, somebody's animals, circle goes around, are we looking at maybe taking, and if we can find another eight acres somewhere and turn that into hayfield, that may not be as beneficial, being right that it's close to Glenwood, as if there's another place somewhere else that, that either the rec department or the town could put into making into hayfields, because we're, we're adding, which is, you know, good thing parking, but we're taking away from, from somebody. I had those fields 20-something years ago, and I don't know who's doing it now, but whoever is doing it is going to lose out, and to them, it's going to be possibly quite substantial. So, I'm just curious, what other spots, if any, and if that was looked at at all.
Sheila can probably answer that the best we can.
Sorry, I just have some notes that I didn't print. I want to address that question, as well as a few others, all at the same time, just to sort of go through the list of due diligence, because it's a valid question. The first question in regards to whether or not we've looked at other parcels, absolutely we have. This is a longstanding and ongoing discussion. It will not end tonight. We looked long and hard, and actually, one of the gentlemen who looked long and hard at the parcel up off of Central Tree Estates, which is currently Hope Ridge. That parcel, they went pretty far down that road of trying to figure out if you could put soccer up there. The restrictions from the state are clear. It is only for passive recreation, and finished soccer fields do not meet the definition of passive recreation. We also obviously have the parcel at the Heights. We have almost a majority of people here from the RDIC. We also looked as well at pieces of land there. We know that there are significant challenges with building anything up at the top of the hill closest to Central Tree because of the underground foundations that are still in place, and it was decided, as many of you in the room know, that the parcels that have frontage on Maple Avenue really needed to be reserved for commercial development, which we're looking for so desperately. Certainly, the town has other land. In some cases, we've looked as well even at another piece of land up behind Glenwood, where the most recent soccer field was privately added, but behind that is pretty significantly wetland. We also have wetlands concerns, as well as concerns from some of the teachers on the town-owned land that abuts Rutland Heights, which is where Central Tree is, and where many of the science teachers are using fields there and property there for science. So, this is an ongoing process. I can honestly tell you that if these fields get placed at Glenwood, it doesn't mean we don't still need more fields for other sports and other activities later. So, there's that, and if I could...
Will the moderator let me answer the rest?
I'm going to proactively answer some of the other questions that we saw kind of floating out there in the past few weeks. We know that this has been a contentious issue. We pretty much involved every town agency in trying to ensure that due diligence was done. The town treasurer-collector worked to check to make sure there were no restrictions listed in the borrowing documents for the school property. There are not. The assessors reviewed our deeds. There are no restrictions of use other than the MDC, Wachusett-Coldbrook Tunnel, which is listed on a plan, so that's a right-of-way. The WRSD lease agreement, which we re-signed in 2016, has an attachment that clearly indicates all three schools, and those are their parcels in their entirety, and you can actually access that document. We also have a letter that we received earlier this year from the Ware River Nature Club. They had, just this year observed bobo lynx. It's a bird that is considered, if not endangered, that at risk. Unfortunately, the field was hayed prior to the birds fledging the nest, and so, because they only had one year worth of data, it's something that we are going to be reaching out to them to do a little bit more research. There is still room on the property to conserve for birdland. We also had a letter from Rutland Land Conservancy. They were not in existence when Glenwood was built, they organized in '04, but they did mention an executive order from Ed King back in 1981, that talked about mitigation of state-owned agricultural lands. This could be included, because we purchased the land probably with state or federal funds. However, it was a, something that was a, and not a requirement. The last thing I would say is, back in '98, 20 years ago, we had 1,100 students here in town. We now have almost 1,600, that is an increase of almost 500 students in less than 20 years. We have also taken about 500 acres out of Chapter 61A, which as you know, is the agricultural, it's not agricultural preservation, but it's the right of first refusal that a town has on lands that have been conserved by a farmer, and in exchange, they've been paying less taxes. When they remove those lands, we have the right of first purchase. We have never, in the history of Rutland yet, successfully taken our right of first purchase. And ironically, the most recent one is actually right across the street, where the Davis Farm, we got pretty far down that road, and unfortunately, the deal fell through, so that was not purchased. To get back to the second part of your question, Kevin, I 100% agree. The Board had a brief discussion about it before this meeting started, which is, we as a town need to take advantage of the fact that we have so many people passionate about agriculture here in the town of Rutland. There is time, and it is time, to establish an open space preservation fund. We do have a conservation fund that's managed by the Conservation Commission. They do have a significant amount of money in that, but many other towns have other funds as well. We could even get legislation to put, and we can get back to this, solar lease payments into an open space fund. As an example, the city of Amherst has conserved 2,000 acres for agriculture. We are not Amherst, but we can start somewhere. And so, we also could do something along the lines of what you were talking about, which is a land swap, and it doesn't need to be limited to the eight acres. To find a parcel that is in a situation where it can be improved and made into a hayfield, I think is something we all need to be looking at. We've also reached out to the state. DCR had hayfields available that we believe were not hayed this year. It's possible that Rutland residents could get right of first refusal on those, and we're gonna look into that as well.
Is there any other discussion to come before us at this time?
Kevin Jarvey, Hillside Road. Thank you for that. I just want to reiterate some of the numbers that you mentioned, that we had, have the opportunity as a town to purchase, we don't know how many acres of land that was in 61A, which is agricultural, but now it's no longer, and the majority of those, I think it's safe to say, are now homes or developments. And I think it's also safe to say that in short time, there's gonna be more of that land readily available for the town to purchase, as opposed to taking an existing, well-groomed field that is providing hay and feed for animals in our town or other towns. Once it's gone, it's gone. You're never gonna get that back. You can say it could be a soccer field, and then we'll just let it grow back in 10 years. Once it's gone, it's gone. And I just hope everybody really understands that. I have children that are in the sports, and I want them to be able to grow, and I want our town to grow and all of that, but I don't think, I really think it's a bad idea for us to stand here and take away open fields, when farmers cannot in any way afford to make open fields. To stump it, to grind it, to fertilize it, to bring in the loam, it's almost unachievable for a farmer today to make new hayfields. It just is almost impossible, at this point, without grants, without help from the town, without help from the state. It just doesn't happen, and we're never gonna get it back if we take it today. Thank you.
Is there other discussion to come before us at this time?
Eachway Drive, Mr. Moderator. Could someone tell me if the land, those eight acres, is currently farmland, or is it land that's mowed by the DPW now?
I can answer that, just because I've been involved in some of the meetings. It is currently farmland.
Total farmland.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you disagree with me?
Sean McLaughlin, 175 Berry Paxton Road. It is not currently farmland. It's not, it's not listed as farmland.
Mr. Sackman, we're not here to fight about that right now, but Mr. Sackman asked if that field was farmed, that failed as farmed. You're probably stating whether it's 61A or not.
It's not 61A, no. And it's not...
His question was, is it farmed? And a farmer faked, cuts that field, and bails it.
Really, he hays it.
So you don't call that farming?
What I'm saying is, there's a contract for haying in town, for three parcels, and that is not part of the contracted parcel. It's being hayed, it's being hayed, and it's in, it's being illegally hayed, really, because someone's haying it and not paying for the hay, or that field. We lease, we lease land in town to be hayed. There's three parcels on the block that is leased. That is not a parcel that's part of that lease.
Thank you. No, just let it go. I answered your question. Is there other discussion to come up at this time?
Ken Lebtkin, Wheeler Road, also on the Board for Rutland Soccer. Just want to point out too, again, I get the interest for haying, I get the importance of the agriculture and the hay in town, but our town population has been growing. Each of, you know, over the past 20, 30 years, every 10 years, our population's been growing by at least 25%, and we're on track to be doing that again by 2020. Another, you know, 25% from where we were in 2010. So as we're building more houses, as more families are coming into this community, you know, even if our fields were adequate that we have now, the amount of fields we have wouldn't be, with all these additional families, children coming in. So, you know, if we're gonna be growing 25% population every 10 years, we really do, as Jason was saying, really need to centralize where our fields are, where our soccer locations are, make it easy for our families, make it easy for our community, and really benefit those that are coming into our community.
Kate Gervais, 292 Pleasantdale Road. I'm one of the aforementioned agricultural enthusiasts. Can you tell me, I won't ask...
Speak, you gotta speak loud.
I won't ask for a map. Do we know whether the soils on this property are mapped as prime farmland, or state soils of, or soils of statewide importance?
So, that's a really good question, and this is, she wanted to know if the lands had been mapped as, what do they call it, important soils?
Yeah, prime farmland.
Prime farmland.
Soils of statewide importance.
In 2003, and we have people here who were on the committee, in 2003, when they started planning the school, one of the things that came up from the state was the possibility of moving the school because of the situation of the farmland up front. When that happened, the school was moved, and no other action was taken to protect that land. That is the short answer to the question. To circle back to the farmland question, it is not designated as 61A, if that makes sense, because the town owns it. Is it being used for haying? Yes, it is, and that's considered a farm use. The question about the hay leases in the town, honestly, we have had five-year leases in the past. The current lease is missing. We're not entirely sure what exactly happened. In either case, where our understanding, based on our financial records, is that it expires in 2019, in the spring. In retrospect, it's sort of interesting to look back and realize that when the school was built, the town, just like it has in many other locations and situations, had opportunities to conserve, we've really never been in a financial position to do that. I think we're probably almost there, but ultimately, Glenwood has now been there and opened for 12 years, and on, this doesn't have anything to do with your question, but I sit here, and I don't have kids who will go to Glenwood and most likely use the majority of these fields, but 12 years' worth of this school that's there, it is connected to the other town parcel that we own, that already has fields on it, and a community center, and a playground that was just donated by the former Heffer Farm, and we've never looked a gift horse in the mouth, if that makes sense. We have people here in the room that remember Marsh Field, and the amount of work and private funding that went into it, and so, when we're in a situation where we can't afford to put these soccer fields in, we have a nonprofit that's come forward to put a good chunk of change into prepping that property, into putting usable fields in, and into improving the property, because they're gonna be adding parking that is desperately needed up there, if anybody's ever been up there. It's hard, as a community, to turn that away for the sake of the parcel that we believe we can replace elsewhere, maybe with even more land. I do, and again, this was not a question of, we shouldn't conserve farmland, of course we should. It's a question of whether this, what is the best use of this particular piece of property?
No, let me answer the, can you state your question again? Your question was, your original question was, is it, of those soils classified? Was your question? She didn't answer your question. You did not. Mr. Williams, can you speak on behalf of the Ag Commission, as I can answer this, but I probably shouldn't, standing here? What did the Department of Food and Ag classify those soils at, when that school was built? What was the classification of the soils? The classification of the soils at the time, I'm speaking on Ag Commission, is highly... Well, I do, because it was classified as, and it states it in that letter that we got from Barbara Hopson when it came...
I believe some of it is mapped as prime farmland.
That is correct.
And I believe some of it is also mapped as soil of statewide importance.
That is correct.
Can I ask my follow-up question?
Stay, can you speak louder into that mic?
I will speak into the microphone. Can I ask my follow-up?
She wants to hear your original answer, please.
I am under the impression that some of the soils on that field are mapped as prime farmland, as well as soils of unique statewide importance. That might be something we can ask for. Now, can I ask my follow-up?
Yes, but you gotta just, you gotta speak closer to the mic, so they can hear you.
So my follow-up is, has dual, or you mentioned the bobo lynx, triple use for this field been considered? We can, farmers delay mowing all the time to allow for bobo lynx habitat and nesting season. Is it possible to pull one haydrop off of this during the summertime, let the bobo lynx do their thing, and play soccer on it in fall?
You want to answer that?
It's possible that youth soccer could answer this question a little better, and of course, the final mapping hasn't been done yet. What we could say is that we currently think there's about 25, give or take, acres, is that fair, that's being hayed? And yes, you're right, you know, from, heard from Ware River, one of their concerns that they brought up was that the Town of Rutland had not made any significant efforts into conservation when it came to birds, across the town, whether it was private or public. They only had this one year, I'm not sure why they happened to do this one year, maybe somebody saw it, you know, but of course, that's an answer. I guess my initial response to you would be, it's more likely that less land would be disturbed from a seasonal perspective, with finished soccer fields and the surrounding land being left alone, but it's a hypothetical that we could go either way on, right? You could very easily say, well, you would require the next person with the lease on the hay to not be able to hay until after July 15th.
That, farmers do that all the time?
Yeah.
My name's Brian Mallon, I'm 35, just a circle. I've been here for a little bit over 18 and a half years, and I just wanted to say that I came out tonight to support Rutland Youth Soccer. All my kids have played since the year 2000, and I still have a son who's involved with the program. I've noticed over the years that we have plenty of kids in this town, and the town keeps on growing, which I think is a great thing. One thing is that we are regional, with the five towns, and it seems that the one thing that I've always cared about was that we don't have enough recreation space for our kids. And as a father of five kids, I've always tried to utilize our fields, whatever fields we've had, in taking my kids out to the fields to play, and I just feel that this will be another, another open space that can be created by Rutland Youth Soccer, so that we would have still open space for the town, but where kids can go play, whether it be during the soccer season, or outside of the soccer season, and so that's why I support this initiative. Thank you.
Kevin Jarvey, Hillside Road. I'm just curious, we talked about budget and the dollars that go into this, do we, do you have an idea as to what the cost of, I know there's a nonprofit that was helping, what the cost of remanning these fields are gonna be, and then what the cost of other sites that were looked at may have been, or would have been? Or what the budget of the Rutland Youth Soccer is for these new fields? Do they, do they have a budget? Do you have a, what's your bank account, I guess is the question?
Yeah, but I'm not certain if that question is legitimate question to be asked, you know, all we're asking to do is turn the fields out, I don't, am I wrong to say that's out of line? I don't, personally, I don't think, I don't think that needs to be answered. Rutland Youth Soccer is willing to do it, it's not the town's, unless people feel I'm wrong, I don't...
So I am correct that the town owns the land, but the school leases it, correct?
That is a yes from Sheila.
Okay, so what has the school said about using it for soccer fields?
So our, Bob Reed, our town administrator, has already had a conversation with the superintendent. As the lessor, we are in the driver's seat when it comes to lease amendments. We are in the midst of a lease that was just renegotiated, it's a 10-year lease that goes from 2016 to 2026, and he was very amenable to an amendment to the lease that will include the fact that we will be allowing a nonprofit to lease, and in fact, sublease, a portion of the front land in order to do this.
Is there any other discussion to come before us at this time? Any other discussion to come before us at this time? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 16, "To see if the town will vote to accept, as public ways, the following streets and/or portions therefore as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, and shown on plans referred below, and on file with the town clerk, and authorized by the Board of Selectmen to acquire, by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fees and/or the easements in such ways as shown on the referral plans for the all-purpose of, for which public ways are used in the Town of Rutland, and any drainage, utility, access, and/or related easement, and as may be necessary therefore to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the available funds, a sum of money for the purpose. Purposes of, you have them listed in front of you, A through D. Could entertain a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the public ways, Grizzly Drive, Cleland Circle, Horizon Drive, and Arrowhead Way, and approve Article 16 as set forth in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to accept a proportion of Glenwood Place as a public way, as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, which portion is shown as proposed extension of Glenwood Place..." as proposed extension of Glenwood Place 20787.78 SF.45 acres on a planned entitled street acceptance plan located on Glenwood Place and Glenwood Place Extension, Rutland, Massachusetts, 01543, dated March 28, 2018, prepared, prepared by New England Environmental Design LLC, on file with the town clerk and authorized by the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fees to and/or easement in said proportion as shown on the referred plan for all purposes in which public ways are used in the town of Rutland and as any drainage, utilities, access, and/or other related easement and as many may be necessary purposes or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as a public way a portion of Glenwood Place and approve Article 17 as set forth in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does not recommend favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Why is the finance against this?
The question is, why is the finance against it? They recommended it unfavorable.
The Finance Committee felt that it did not go through the typical way that these types of things go through. It kinda came in the back door, and we have committees in place for the reason. So, that's the reason for the unfavorable.
This is a follow-up. I work as the Glenwood Secretary and staff on many different meetings where this particular parcel, this stretch of road was discussed, and it's a very short...
You gotta, you gotta speak to the other mic. Yeah?
Oh, sorry. It's a, it's a very short stretch of road that, it's, in my understanding, has been already been plowed and maintained by the town up until this point? No? No?
Sorry, I'm attending...
Gary, you gotta come over here, please. Mr. Kelleher, you want me to repeat what you were saying?
Do I have to bend over? Does anybody know how to adjust this so people can stand up?
We've got short people here, too.
Okay, can everybody hear me? We currently maintain as a public roadway the initial piece of Glenwood Place. The piece in question now, Laura, is the 327...
Hey, 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 speak closer to the mic, please, sir. They're gonna yell at me, so...
You know, this is my last meeting, I don't even have to say this. The, the new, the new piece in question is 327 feet, which is an extension of Glenwood Place Extension. We do not maintain that section of roadway, depending on the outcome of this meeting. That could change.
Do you understand his comment?
We have never maintained, plowed, or otherwise, the mentioned 327-foot extension. That was maintained by Mr. Blair.
Is there any other, oh. Come forward, because they're not gonna hear you.
Mr. Blair, would you like me to lower the mic? We only...
State your name, address, please.
Cleveland Air, 8 Heritage Hill Drive. First of all, can I ask the Finance Committee a question? May I do that?
Yes, so...
So, when you say it came in through the back door, I don't understand that, that, what that means. Why do you say that it comes, came in through the back door?
The evening that this warrant was brought to our attention, we, we asked who brought it up, and usually, streets that are laid out are brought through the planning board, and then through different ways that way. This one came in through the select board, kinda cutting out the, the different committees that we have to look these types of things over.
The reason for that is because it's a town-owned street already. It's just private, not public. So the town doesn't maintain that portion of the road. Gary's right, I have maintained that 327 feet prior to this because I used to own it. But now, other people own it. And because of a little bit of a miscommunication, they're gonna have to maintain it, not me. It's a, it's a public way, it's a private way, but it's owned by the town of Rutland. Those houses that came on that street were put there on a public, a private way, but it was an A and R plan, approval-not-required plan, didn't have to go through the planning board. That's why the planning board didn't bring it. So, it's, it didn't come through any back channels, it came the only way that it could come, through the select board, they had to lay it out, that's the only way that I could do it. Okay?
That wasn't properly conveyed, I guess, but that's our standing.
If, if you knew that, would you recommend favorably?
I, not, I'm not...
Okay. So as far as what Gary said, we have been maintaining it, but now people live there. So, they own specifically, and attorney could probably back me up on this, to the center of the way. So, they, if it's a public way, the town will plow and maintain it. If it's not, then they have to plow and maintain it. So, because of miscommunication, the wrong thing got put on the plan, and now we're just trying to make it right. And so we brought it through whatever channels we thought was the correct channels.
Are you asking him to comment?
Yes, please. He's, he's shaking his head in the furnace, so it'll probably help me out, you know?
I think they can all hear me from here. You'd rather me at the microphone?
We pay you a lot of money, we want to hear you.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Very briefly through to the meeting, you'll note that this, this street was separated from the, the previous article. The previous article addressed subdivision ways. The reason that this one is different, as, and I think it was already communicated, is this is not a subdivision way, so it's not subject to the subdivision approval process. So instead, it goes to the Board of Selectmen for layout and to the, to town meeting for acceptance. It doesn't go through the subdivision process. So that's, that's also why this would be a two-thirds vote, because it wasn't included on a, included on a subdivision plan. So I think that the gentleman who spoke before me spoke very well as to this issue. And again, right now, it's, it's, it's maintained by the residents, instead of the town requires acceptance by town meeting in order for it to be listed as a public way and maintained by the town.
Any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Where this is a two-thirds, I will ask my two counters to count. Again, you're gonna count the bleachers because Mr. Sannermore has left. All those in favor of this article, please raise your cards. Mr. Jarby, you gonna count for me, please? I'm sorry. All those in favor, you're raising your cards, until the counters count, please. There was 68 yeses, 18 noes, motion carries. Moving on to Article 19, 18.
Ms. Moderator, could you declare that two-thirds vote?
That is declared a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Wow. Is it because I'm just speaking here at the mic, or? Moving on to Article 18, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Rutland general bylaws by adding a new section entitled Stormwater Management, all as set forth in the handout entitled November 19, 2018, Special Town Meeting. Article 18, Stormwater Management Bylaw, as on file in the town clerk or take any action in relation thereto. We have somebody that's gonna make a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Rutland general bylaws by adding a new section titled Stormwater Management as set forth in the handout entitled November 19, 2018, Special Town Meeting, Article 18, Stormwater Management Bylaw.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this art? Please proceed with caution.
I have two questions. First of all, I didn't get a chance to read the handout, I didn't know it was gonna be on the hearing, so I apologize for that. But can somebody just kinda give us a brief idea of what this changes to stormwater management? Because I probably would have a lot to do with what I do. Number one. Number two, is it something that's gonna cost the town money?
Mr. Kelleher, is that something that you'd like to discuss, please?
Want me to lower this mic here, Gary, a little bit?
Okay, a little, brief little history. 2003, the state, as long as, as well as other sections of the country, come out with a, what they call a Nipte's permit. It was a five-year permit, it went from 2003 to 2008, and this was a federal requirement. From 2008 to present, there was no new regulation as far as stormwater goes. It was a mirroring of the first five-year permit, and it's a five-year permit process. Recently, although there were many appeals for this stormwater management bylaw or act, the rest of us, the rest of all state Massachusetts, for the sake of argument, had to wait till New Hampshire finally drafted their Nipte's permit. Now, the DEP has come through with many, many standards that everybody has to follow. And the first, for all of us to follow, as of October 1, 2018, we had to apply for and submit an NOI, a notice of intent, to follow the stormwater regulations. The most important part of that NOI, which should have been done prior to this, was a stormwater management bylaw, which was mentioned to all, as well as Mr. Blair, that this would be voted on and enacted at our special town meeting. So that's why this is bringing, being forth, brought forth now, and it is a requirement, it's not just an option. Other parts of it will be post-construction runoff, site work, and so on and so forth. But for now, this is a stormwater management bylaw that has to be accepted, very important to the NOI process.
You all thought I asked him if it was gonna cost the town money? Part of your question was...
Is that correct, Mr. Blair?
Yes, that's correct. I'm really afraid to tell you what this could cost the town, because there's so many sundry items, to me anyway, that we have to follow. But the initial estimate for this, year one, anyway, would be approximately $92,000, and for a 10-year plan, could exceed $1 million. My suggestion and my recommendation was to, to the DEP and to the town as well, was to create an enterprise fund just for stormwater. This is an expense that we have no choice, we have no say in it. The town will have to do it, as everyone else will have to follow.
Do I have a follow-up?
So, we've been filing Nipte's permits since we've been building subdivisions, since the permit came weagle in 2003. It's a, it's a federal permit, not a state permit. I don't understand, what, what does the town have to do? Do you have to control stormwater and treat it? Is that what it's, is that what it's all about, or is it, because alls we really have to do is follow stormwater management regs, and then they, you follow up with reports every time it rains? I mean, I, I don't understand why it would cost the town so much money, or what you have to do to bring it up to, you bringing it up to a certain speed, or, or like a certain level that you have to for storm drains? Is that what's happening? I don't know.
Stormwater management is not the portion of it that will cost the town money, it's the other steps that will be followed by the Nipte's permit process. But the first part of the NOI, notice of intent, is to have a stormwater management plan, which will pretty much be no different plea and to everyone than what we have now. It just had, it was amended, it was sent to the bylaw committee, approved by them, and this is what we have now. But if you're just asking if a stormwater management plan will cost money to the town no more than it costs now, which is, which is nothing, we pay, we pay $4,000 a year to be part of a coalition, they do most of the work and research for us, and there's a lot of work to do left, such as mapping of outfalls, catch basins, and so on and so forth. But that's something that's coming anyway. But for the stormwater management plan itself to be accepted, that's an NOI requirement, not an additional cost.
So, does it make, does it make every catch basin a wetland? Is this something that makes every catch basin in town a wetland? Like it was gonna do in the city of Worcester? They had that big, big article in the paper? No? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
His question was asked, and lawyer shook its head no, so, if, if you didn't see it. Is there any other discussion to come before us at this article? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I don't know what you're doing, you butt, what are you doing?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to take Article 14 off the table for further reconsideration by the body. I would argue that in the absence of our town administrator, we did not provide you necessarily with the amount of background and information, and didn't clarify what the financial implications can be if we do not take action on this article tonight, and would like the opportunity to explain that.
So, you want to take it off?
Off the table. Mark, it's not debatable. Sorry, just to clarify, this is the article on solar, and the re, I, I don't have a lot of leeway in explaining why I believe we should consider this further, if only to say that we, it has been a project under discussion with a professional since February. We need to take some responsibility in not providing you with the handouts here tonight. However, those handouts and maps have been part of the public process since February, and I'd like that opportunity to have a further discussion about it, in particular because part of the, the article involves a parcel other than just pure town-owned, it involves a parcel at Rutland Heights as well. The financial implications of not taking action on solar projects at this time are
So it's not subject to debate? So I can't let him talk? You can't talk? Please, pause. Pause.
That was taken out of, out of, that motion was tabled, and I don't believe my staff can bring up an article that's been due.
That's not correct. But if, if an article's been tabled, it sits on the table, and a motion to take it off the table can be made, and that's the motion that's been made.
I don't believe the person who made the motion to table it, we have to make the motion to take it off the table.
That is...
Can it be on the bill, it's on?
That would be reconsideration. This is not a motion to reconsider, this is a motion to take it off the table.
So a motion's been made by Sheila, and seconded by Mr. Sullivan. There is no, there is no debate on this, so just for clarification of what is happening, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Mark, is she is taking it off the table to bring it back to have discussion on it, is that correct?
Let him explain it, please, I don't necessarily 100% understand.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, I will try to be brief. The action that was taken previously laid the article on the table, it did not dispose of the article, it laid it on the table. If, if there had been a motion to reconsider, that would be a reconsideration of the motion to table. What this is, is essentially the reverse action of what happened, it's an effort to take it back off the table and bring it back before the body. So this would allow you to take it off the table and, and continue debate as if it, as if it was before you, as it had been previously. So this is simply taking it off the table.
So we would handle it just like the original article?
And if, yeah, and if... And if, yeah, and if this, if this motion passes, then you'd be back to considering that article as you wore previously.
No, there's no discussion, but he's asking a question to clarify things, something. Is it a clarification question?
Once, once it is back on the table, the motion can be amended, yes.
Just for, for simple sakes, I believe, we're taking it from being on the table, back for discussion, so it starts that article all again, I believe. This is majority. Just, this is majority for, to bring it back off the table. You understand? Is there any other point of order on what is happening on this motion? I, I can't answer that, because that'd be a discussion article. That's not a point of order, I would classify. After you vote on it, you could probably ask that during the article, maybe. Is that fair to you? So, this is a majority. All those in favor of taping this off the table to start discussions again, please raise your cards. All who oppose? All right, we're going to have to count, guys. It's too close for me to do it. Kevin and Mr. Senical. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And this is just to consider to take it off the table, folks. Is it just you? I mean, this stuff never happens to me. I've never had this one. There he is.
It's like an exam.
I want to get home early tonight. Say 19. All those opposed, same sign, please. This motion carries at 51 yeses and 37 noes. So in turn, we go back to this article at this point, or we take it later? We go back to this article? So we're going back to Article 14. I probably don't need to read it again. And do I have to listen to the motion again? Well... So the motion is essentially still on the table. So the, just for clarification, the motion has been made and seconded. There was some discussion, and that's when it got tabled, so the motion is back on the floor. Is this in regards to the article?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Canacchioli, please state your name and address.
You just, you just said it.
18 Blueberry Lane.
Yeah, boy. Rutland, Massachusetts. He was an excellent student when I had him in class. I had him in my government class, and that's why he's the moderator, because he learned, he paid attention. I have been coming to town meetings since 1973. You could probably count on one hand how many times I've missed. I've never been embarrassed and upset with the town of Rutland like I am tonight. We had an article tabled by a two-thirds vote, and we wait till late in the meeting to bring it up. Why wasn't it board of selectmen? Why didn't you bring it up immediately when it was over, when the votes that tabled it were still in the hall? And I've heard words like "backdoor." If there was any backdoor, the move I saw right now was a backdoor move. And I would hope that all of you in this hall would vote this down, let it be brought back in at the next town meeting with the appropriate maps. We have all the technology in the world, so the maps could be the size of that wall back there, so that we know where this is going. I'm embarrassed to say I live in Rutland.
Is there any discussion on the article? We'd like to stay on subject. Is there any discussion on the article? Oh. As a selectman or as an individual? Brief on topic.
I, I want to apologize to the body. However, the allegation that was just made is incorrect. I did not know the process. It took me a few articles to know whether I could do anything. And the reason I am bringing this up again is because it's important, and because unfortunately we are in a position where the person who was without a doubt the right person to explain this to you is not here. And for that, I apologize as well. We have been working with a professional solar consultant since February on this project. The maps, the documents, the background information has been available at all of these meetings, which were public. That said, we don't have these maps available printed out for you tonight. Do I have it here in front of me, now that I've gone back through my emails and I found it from July? Yes. It's a 25-acre parcel, 16 acres of which will be cleared. The other thing I would note is that, another reason I brought it up to be reconsidered by the body, is that you have two projects in front of you. If there are concerns about Wheeler, there is a possibility, and I think Mr. Sullivan wants to speak after me, there is a possibility that we could amend the motion and move only on the Rutland Heights portion of this project. It's not what I would recommend. Obviously, we placed this article with the idea that the town needs the income. The longer we wait in the solar process, the less financially viable it becomes. He could speak more to those numbers, but I'm hoping you'll give us a chance to further explain this. We didn't get the chance when it was tabled, and again, I apologize for anything that we didn't provide you that you wished you had tonight.
Mr. Sullivan?
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, Chairman of the RDIC. When Ms. Dibbs mentions that this is time-sensitive, it is very time-sensitive from the standpoint of the value to the town. And just by way of an example, I have a spreadsheet here. Had we got into this process just on the Rutland Heights property back, let's say, a year or two ago, the town would have realized almost $700,000 a year in solar revenue. If, if we wait a significant, well, not a significant amount, any more time, that number could go down to as low as $320,000 or so. So this, that's just the Rutland Heights property. The Wheeler Road property has similar numbers, and I guess I should let them speak to that, but their numbers could go, could have been almost $445,000 a year, and they potentially could go down to $150,000 a year. So when, when Ms. Dibbs mentions the time importance of this, it is critical that this get voted on expeditiously in order for us to realize the maximum return. So, you know, if, if, again, we go back to the number, and the reasonable number we've been told for Rutland Heights is somewhere around $500,000 a year for 20 years. So we're talking $10 million of revenue to the town. I, I think we all know what could be done with that. Now, I understand, or I, I think I understand the concerns of the Wheeler Road folks. I would hope there's somebody here that's able to describe that parcel adequately so that people understand where it is. But from the Rutland Heights standpoint, I don't think there's any question what the parcel is. I mean, it's an 88-acre parcel, and what we're talking about putting solar on is, I feel bad with my back to everybody, is the south, the southwest...
Southwest portion of the project?
Yes. The southwest portion of the project, which is, for all intents and purposes, if you were to drive up the Rutland Heights road and were to go up onto the top of the property where the hospital used to be, and keep facing west, it would be down over the hill, below where the roadway used to be, below the flagpole and all that. So it's going to be almost out of sight from Maple Ave or anywhere else. The only place you'd be able to see it is when you drive up onto the property. So from, you know, I don't want to be selfish and say that I want the Rutland Heights portion of this addressed, but I do, but I, I hope someone from, someone, someone else can address the Wheeler Road portion of it, and if, if, I don't know how to do this, and if it can be done, if the Wheeler Road portion of it still is not acceptable to the residents, then I would like to hope we could amend it and vote on the Rutland Heights portion of it, because it is as straightforward as it can be. I mean, there are no houses, there are, you know, I can't say there are no butters, but I mean, I don't think it has the same impact that some of the folks on the Wheeler Road property worry about.
Norm Anderson, Solar Committee member, and also Chairman of the Planning Board. Particularly regarding the Wheeler Road property, the location that has been proposed for the solar facility, again, if you know the lay of the land at all, is basically down in back of the town water tanks that are up near the top of the hill and going down through the open field, a part of the open field, as you're heading down towards the water treatment plant. It's that section of property. There was, the initial proposal that came in also brought a lot of them out further towards Central Tree Road. We asked them to revise this, to try to tuck it further away so it wouldn't be as visible, would not take up as much of the open fields that are there, that are now being paved. Finally, this process, the, the article here is just to enter into negotiations and lease deals. The applicant will still have to apply for site plan review in order to construct this facility and get site plan approval. This is, will have to come from the planning board. The planning board is very, very sensitive about making certain, as certain as we can, anyway, that there is either limited or no visibility to surrounding homes and developments. We, I think we, I'll have to point out one thing. We learned our lesson with Treasure Valley. I'm sure lots of you drive down Pleasantale Road and see the solar facility there, but I'll make a bet, a lot of you also drive down Pleasantale Road and do not see the Golden Hills solar facility. Okay? One of the things that we certainly aim for is to impact those living around these solar facilities as little as possible.
Any other discussion?
Charlie McGlaughlin. How many acres on Rutland Heights are we talking? Does anyone have an idea?
Development to solar?
Yes.
About, about 23 acres of the area.
Mr. Senical, were you next? State your name and address, please.
Darren Unfrick, 14 Wheeler Road. I want to reiterate my question about, that this is not part of watershed, Mushapag watershed district, and I'd like to see evidence that it's not.
This does not help everyone here. I did upload the map to my... I've uploaded the color map, which was available back in July as well, to my select page. That is not going to help everyone in the room. I'm not going to sit here and say that it does. The property in question, when you see it, you can see where the Mushapag watershed is. We do get a certain amount of points for brownfields, but the watershed wouldn't allow a project like that, so it's possible that out of the 25 acres worth of the project, a portion of the buffer zone is going to be in the watershed. I can't answer that completely, but they wouldn't allow us to put solar there.
Any chance that's considered farmland?
It is my understanding, and there are people in this room who can answer better than I, that there were portions on Wheeler Road that were also being paved. However, I don't think they are the portions that we are talking about. They are adjacent, though. Kevin? Yeah? Kevin's not here.
So I just ask everyone here to take this into consideration when, you know, if and when we do a vote. I think there's just a couple other things. Wheeler Road is pretty small.
Get close to it.
Wheeler Road is pretty small, and it's, it's really a neighborhood. So now you're really talking about putting, you know, these large, you know, I have solar panels on my house. I own almost solar panels, so believe me, I am not anti-solar panel. But these very large facilities in neighborhoods, I really have, you know, an issue with. And I know we don't have that map in front of us, but if you see where it is relative to that Mushapag Pond, it may not technically be in that watershed district, but it's uphill of that pond, and you're going to, you know, everything flows downhill, right? So I just want to read, basically, in kind of the Rutland statutes, what it says about what a watershed protection district is. Basically, the purpose is to preserve and protect the watershed of Mushapag Pond, which is basically our public water supply. So you can imagine when they're going in there, taking down all the trees and clearing everything, bringing these large trucks in with all these large solar panels, it's going to be, you know, they can't guarantee that there's going to be no runoff into our drinking water supply. And as I said, the Mushapag Pond is a public water supply used by both Rutland and Holden from uses which could contaminate the water and adversely affect the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of those towns. So that is what a watershed protection district is, and this may not technically be in it, but it's very close. The watershed protection districts should preserve and protect the water course and wetlands within the watershed, protect the town against the detrimental use and development of land adjoining the water coast course and the pond, and preserve and maintain the groundwater table because of its contribution to the amount and quality of the pond. So coming from a person who lives on Wheeler Road, it is a real neighborhood road. It's very close to the water supply for the town, and if we're going to vote on this, I really request that you, you know, turn, turn this down. I'm certainly amenable to amending this, to, to split the consideration of the Rutland Heights property and the Wheeler Road property, but if not, if we're forced to vote on it altogether, then I would really request that you vote no. Thanks.
Just quickly, two other things that should be noted in regards to the Rutland Heights project. They have committed to working with the school to put up a kiosks in schools so that they can play off of the solar generation and so on, and use it part of their education process. But the question that was asked about, how much area is it? And it is roughly 23 acres. Most importantly, though, it is a portion of the land that is unbuildable. I mean, it's the backside of, of the property, very steep, nothing will ever be built there, so this is, for all intents and purposes, it's found money. You know, could be as much as $10 million over 20 years, which I would hope some of, which would go back into the property to develop it with perhaps senior centers or whatever else the town may find appropriate. So I, is anybody else speaking?
Chris Senical, 64, Glemmon Road. This article is to allow the select board or another enabled body to negotiate pilot programs. So my question through you, Mr. Moderator, is are these lands going to be leased or sold, first off?
Leased.
They are leased? Okay. And the one, the pilot program, I build, I'm electrical contractor. I have built solar fields in this town and all around New England. I'm an investor in those. They are very profitable. It's, it's a good thing for a lot of people. Pilot programs are often not very good for towns. As a developer, it's good for the developer. I just would, I, I would love to hear an amendment to this, that there is some type of legal, you know, the town lawyer will... you know, the town lawyer will, has, has some say in these pilot programs, so that oftentimes developers in general like to look at towns as easy prey. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody here that would negotiate these, but these guys are pretty good at what they do, and if you don't have some good legal advice, you can get the town into some troubles. You basically become, some of these programs, some of these deals go down where you're taking on some of the risk of the, of, of the, of the solar field. So you just gotta be careful, that's all. Thank you.
Just to Mr. Senical's point, in regards to legal, we have a, a solar consultant, or the Solar Committee does, who has been working extensively with our town council. I can't tell, well, he could probably tell you how many hours we've, they've put into, come up with documents that are acceptable in, you know, in favor of the town to the best of their ability. Just before we stop discussion, I would like for these to be considered together, but is there a way to consider them together, but if the Wheeler Road portion gets shot down again, that we can then consider the Rutland Heights property on its own? Because I, I don't, I just don't see, I shouldn't, I question what opposition there may be to the Rutland Heights project.
if you have the ability. The town council has advised that we can vote, we can vote as one, and if it does go down, we can reconsider the vote and then break the article out. Or you can do it, you can choose to divide the article at this point and have two different individual votes on it. You can do that before and after. I personally am not a fan of voting on something, and then if you lose, you can vote again on it and do it two different ways, so.
The second option accomplishes the same thing, anyway.
Motion to divide, if you choose to divide it, but...
Well, this is, this is the selectman's article, so I guess it should be up to them, correct?
Well, if it was up to them, they should have divided it in the beginning, in my opinion. That's moderator's opinion, not Randy's.
These were not divided because they were negotiated together by our solar consultant, who, to Mr. Senical's point, has been an amazing asset, and I think has gotten us the best deal we could possibly get right now. Clearly, deals are changing every day. I would note that multiple solar projects in town, and Chris made a very good point, which is somebody is making an enormous amount of money off of these. These first two projects are really the first projects that, because the town owns the property, the town will reap the benefits of it, and I certainly understand that as a person who's a homeowner in town, and we are all taxpayers here, there are certain things we don't want to look at all the time. We haven't had a lot of control or opportunity to control where the other solar fields go. We have had a very good experience in working with those companies, who did try to mitigate any of our concerns relative to views and things like that. I guess, to Mr. Sullivan's point, we will certainly go with what the body wishes. I can certainly understand the moderator's point about not splitting it up and sort of throwing things at you until we get what we want. I'll be honest, I don't know that any of us realized that this would be a point of contention. We have had multiple private solar projects come before this body in the negotiation of pilot for them, except that they've been on private property, and we didn't get a chance to say no to them. We have several more coming up. Norm can speak more fully to those. I think we have five coming down the pipeline. He's not known. Three? 10. 10 coming down the pipeline, all on private property. This is an opportunity for us to increase and diversify our income off of just residential property taxes. I would love for us to consider these together. They are good for this town.
Brian Millen, 35 Vista. In regards to solar power, one thing that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is most town leases are for 10 years, and yet we're trying to say that this lease for 20 years is a good thing. If most town leases for other programs are for 10 years, why isn't this pilot program for 10 years? Thank you.
Somebody behind you, if, you're welcome to come, you're in line before him.
So Darren Unfrick, 14 Wheeler Road. I just want to say once again that this is the first project that I know of that's going to be put really in a, in a community, in a neighborhood, you know, in the town of Rutland. I can't stress that enough. My kids and I, and my dog, and my neighbor's kids, we use that area back there. There's all kinds of really cool trails, there's plaques of, of historical information of Rutland. It's really a fascinating area, and we're really gonna, we're gonna regret the fact that we're gonna tear all that away for, for solar panels. So once again, I'm gonna ask that, that everyone vote no for this project.
So, are you gonna make a motion, or?
Oh, I beg your pardon, go ahead, sorry.
There was a question about leases, and there might have been some misunderstanding. There is not a, a long-term, consistent policy of 10-year leases. In fact, the last March lease was actually for, I think, 99 years. We recently passed, was it a bylaw? We recently passed a bylaw that says that the board of selectmen cannot enter into any agreements beyond 10 years. We're structuring some of the sports leases around that. The, these pilots and these solar leases are different. Obviously, these solar projects have a lifespan. None of these companies are gonna want to do anything less than 20 years. We work in decommissioning monies, because really nobody knows yet what these solar farms are gonna look like in 20 years, and we want to make sure that when the lease is up, the land reverts back to what it looked like originally.
Is there any other?
So, given, given the instructions of town council, I would like to amend Article 14 to separate into two separate articles, Article 14A and 14B, and have them be voted on separately. Does that work?
That'd be a, I don't think we want an amendment, we want a motion to divide the question.
You give me the legal, illegal issue, you know, you know what I'm trying to do. So, motion to divide the question and separate the two articles into 14A and 14B.
This motion receives, needs support. Oh, Mr. Williams has already seconded it. Does there choose to be any discussion on separating the two articles? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? And this is just majority, is that correct? So we are voting only on separating virtually Wheeler Road and Rutland Heights Hospital. So everybody understands that? All those in favor of separating Wheeler and Rutland Heights, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, which is A and B? Is Wheeler, we're gonna go with, we're gonna say Wheeler is A. Do we choose to have any discussion on Wheeler Road?
Point of information.
Yes, please, I want to make sure you get your exercise.
My voice is going, let's try to get a little... Point of information. In all the town meetings I've come to, and I'll confer with, divert myself to the council, shouldn't this be written out? Shouldn't this bylaw or this, what we're gonna do here, be written out and submitted, and, and people, I don't, I mean, I've been here many, since 1973. Somebody changes an article, they give a piece of paper, it gets written out. This is all verbal and talked to, and...
My, my ruling in the past, Mr. Knackioli, is as long as it's done before the end of the evening.
Oh, so it's gonna be written out. I'll get, I'll get a chance to check it out when I walk out, out of here.
Mr. Knackioli, I've been corrected. In the past, I do the amendments, has to be written out. Motion to divide, they don't feel needs to be written out, is what, it was advised from my left-hand side.
Two separate articles don't have to be written out.
It's, all you're doing is dividing.
Motion to divide.
Just to divide, that's all. Is there any other discussion on Wheeler Road?
Ken Lebkin, 62 Wheeler Road. So, I'm just looking at the, the map that shows the layout of where the proposed solar fields will be. I guess my question is, where, where will all the equipment and, you know, the solar panels themselves, how are they gonna get from the road to this, this land? Is that through, is that on Wheeler, is that through Central Tree?
They're gonna use a boat and bring it across Mushapag. Oh.
As a resident on that, so as a resident on that road, I'm concerned about that.
Can you answer that?
I can focus right, I may.
And are you on the Solar Committee, or are you bidding on the job?
No, I am neither, at this time. I am not bidding on the project, depending on who that, in general, if there's access to the property, Ken, it would go up that access road. So I don't, I'm not familiar with that parcel of land, but at some point, that piece of land, I would imagine, has frontage on Wheeler, or Central Tree, or even Wachusett possibly, and they would, they have to have a means of access for all the trucks and all the utilities to maintain this. So there will be, every solar farm will have a gated roadway entrance into it.
Mr. Dad?
No, I, I, thank you. I understand that. I guess from my perspective, where I live on Wheeler Road, unlike the other gentleman that spoke earlier, I'm on the less occupied side, which is also downhill from where the water towers are. So the more land, my fear is the more land that's cleared out for access and to put the solar farms up, the more water runoff I'll be getting down, because I'm the next house from the water towers. So the more water runoff and things of that nature that are be coming down onto my property from where this is located, that's...
Is there any other discussion on, on Wheeler Road, solar? Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, do we understand what we're voting on? We are voting on Section A of Article 14, just on Wheeler Road. All those, and this is majority only, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? We're gonna count, please. Sorry, but it's too close for me to use my eye. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards.
Clarify what allowing means?
Allowing what?
The vote, that's the question. Can you clarify what that means? Allow making solar panels to go on Wheeler Road, is that what you mean by that?
No, no, I'm doing Article 14A, and all it states was for them to go into a tax arrangement, agreement, and payment of lieu of taxes. Negotiations, they still have to do a plot plan and other things like that. Am I correct? So all they're doing is having the ability to negotiate. All those opposed, same sign. This motion carries, 44 yeses, 38 no's. Now, we are gonna vote on 14B, which is the Rutland Heights Hospital side of things. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? This is a majority vote as well. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? Motion carries. So, we are going back to where we were, which I can't tell you where that was. We talked about stormwater management, now we're moving on to, ooh, marijuana. Here we go. That one might have helped, huh? Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaws to prohibit all non-medical establishments in the town of Rutland, and for such purposes, to delete the text in the title, Article 12, Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments, and insert in place, therefore, the new Article 12 Marijuana Establishments as the follows. Article 12 Marijuana Establishments, consistent with GL Section 94G, Section 3A, and, dash, 2. All non-medical marijuana establishments as defined in GL Section 94G, Section 1, including marijuana cultivation, independent testing laboratories, marijuana production manufacturing, marijuana retail, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business shall be prohibited in the town of Rutland, and to authorize the town clerk to assign appropriate numbering by bylaw in order that be in compliance with the numbering format of zoning bylaw or act in any other manner in relation thereto. Who has the motion here? Oh, you do.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote for menzoni bylaws to prohibit marijuana establishments in the town of Rutland, and put Article 19 as second in the law.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator.
Whoa.
Report recommendation of the planning board.
Report recommendation of the planning board. We did talk about that earlier.
Okay, you have, was available a copy of the report of the planning board. The planning board recommends, uh, the planning board recommends consideration of this article.
Mr. Knackioli, Mr. Javi was first. Javi's first, you're second, and Mr. Randy is third in current order, please.
Kevin Javi, I'm just curious, what's the current state definition of non-medical marijuana establishments versus medical marijuana establishments? Do we know currently if somebody's growing marijuana in Massachusetts, and that person that's growing it sell it to a dispensary that is medically classified versus non-medically? I just don't really know the difference between, I mean, all this non-medical versus medical, I'd just like some clarification, what the difference between the two are?
Do you have an answer?
I'm gonna give some high-level basics. There are people in this room that will be able to do more than me. You are allowed currently to have six plants for personal use in your house. You are not allowed to sell those plants. Everything we are talking about tonight is for non-medical, as in you do not have a prescription for it. And before the question comes up, there is no agricultural consideration of non-medical marijuana. It is not considered an agricultural product.
I could use some of the soccer field.
Mr. Knackioli, second, I'm sorry. I forgot you were there, Mr. Knackioli, I'm sorry.
You got an A in my class 30 years ago, and you forgot me, huh?
Well, you're usually over there, I'm sorry.
I still have one more year to rescind that grade. Anyway, we heard tonight, very eloquently, my good friend, Mr. Sullivan, speak about the need for the solar panels and the revenue. I think it's really short-sighted of us, if we were to vote a prohibition against any form of this marijuana... form of this marijuana, we don't know what the future lies, is ahead of us, we don't know what kind of revenue we could bring into this community. We certainly know that we're not gonna get a lot of manufacturing into Rutland, we just don't have the infrastructure. And we are tying our hands, I think we are really tying our hands, if we prohibit anything dealing with marijuana that comes under the law, it's legal by the federal government, it's legal by the state government, why shouldn't it be legal here, and why shouldn't we profit? I don't see it, I don't see it harming, okay, I take it back, not by the feds, by the state. I don't see us harming if, if we have control, just like we have control over package stores. I don't see any difference. So, I would think very, very wisely, before I prohibit, let's wait, see what ha, see what the future has. If there is a problem, you can change the law then, you can make the bylaw then. But I think we should be keeping ourselves open to any kind of financial growth. Thank you very much.
Michelle Van Reet, Charnak Hill Road. I, I don't disagree with Mr. Canacchioli. My, my comment is, there are five articles dealing with marijuana, and it, it's very confusing as to which each of these articles mean, and it very much looks like what you just said you don't like to see is where one gets, one gets shot down and you bring it back in a different form. And that's kind of what it looks, looks like to me in terms of having five different articles, and, and they all look very similar.
Do you want, do you want an explanation or just a comment?
Like, like an expl, like, why are, why are there five different articles?
Norman, can you answer that? Why is there five different articles than one big one? Uh, you want him? You want the town council to talk on that same subject? Go ahead. Come on up, Norman.
Okay, we presented these five different articles to give the voters, you the voters, a really, really, a choice. And if we look at these things in order...
Speak louder or closer to the mic, please. They're not gonna hear you.
Okay. Uh, this Article 19, one choice prohibits all types of non-medical marijuana establishments. If you adopt it, that's what happens. If you don't, we go to Article 20. Article 20 allows, in certain districts, all eight different classifications of marijuana establishments, and that's all the way from cultivation to processing, transport, uh, research labs, uh, testing facilities, and retail sales. If that one passes, that's what happens. If that doesn't, we go to Article 21. Article 21, uh, is basically to allow the town to collect a 3% sales tax. Okay? Then on to Article 22. Article 22 allows all different kinds of non-medical marijuana establishments, except retail So, cultivation would be allowed, processing would be allowed, research and testing labs would be allowed, transport would be allowed, but no retail sales. Finally, the last article, and I guess I'm gonna preface this, these first four articles are all, uh, excuse me, Article 19, 20, 22, are zoning bylaws. These require a two-thirds majority vote to pass. The last article is an amendment to prohibit non-medical marijuana by a general bylaw. That vote will only require a majority vote. Finally, we presently have a moratorium in place on marijuana establishments. If none of these articles pass, then we have basically no control, other than what state law says on where, how, where they are cited, how marijuana establishments can be built. So, what we're looking for is, we're looking for some answer from you people, which of these is most satisfactory to the majority of the voters.
Do you have a question on what, Mr.? Go up to the mic. No, please, because some people are hard of hearing.
Mike Sullivan again. I guess...
He is answering the question on that, what he asked there. I had a problem back there.
Sorry. Um, kinda lost my train of thought.
You're asking a question of what Norman just did.
So, yeah, Norm, if I may, you mentioned that you had a zoning bylaw and a general bylaw, that if I heard you right, are the same thing. They're the same verbiage. Why, other than the fact that you need two-thirds and a simple majority, are the same things being proposed twice? Okay, there are two reasons. First reason, the fact that the general bylaw...
Hold that to the mic. You gotta eat the mic.
Uh, this only bylaw requires a two-thirds, and to be perfectly honest with you, in formulating all of these, we had very serious doubts as to whether any of these would get a two-thirds majority. There obviously is a, you know, very, very wide, uh, variety of opinions regarding marijuana. We did a survey, uh, that I believe went out, well, first of all, we, we did a town vote, and whether to allow or prohibit non-medical marijuana, and it was, I don't know, something like forty-eight to fifty-two, uh, percent on, on the vote. So, you know, it's very, very, seems evenly split. The second reason is that, according to town council, the best way to regulate these non-medical marijuana establishments is through a zoning bylaw. A general bylaw, they say, they, they really have no experience at this point, but they seem to think that it is possible that a general bylaw could be challenged in court. For purposes of the committee that worked on this, this one is just kind of a last, I guess they'll call it, a, a last call. If nothing else passes, this is an easier one by, just by virtue of the fact that it only requires a majority vote, uh, to get passed. We really don't want to leave with nothing being accepted. So, just as a follow-up to, the last thing you said was that if we don't adopt something, we are stuck with what the state, uh, requires or allows. What is it that the state allows that would be good or bad for us? I, I guess, might, I might, maybe more clearly, why is the state regulation not as good as what we're trying to adopt? Is that, am I asking? Yeah. Uh, I guess, two things. First of all, would be location. If we are allowing any of these, we are allowing them only in specific zones. For example, for cultivation and most other purposes, only in our industrial zones. If we don't have a bylaw that states that, they would be able to locate these in any part of the business zones, including right in our town center district. Someone could take a two-acre parcel of land, right in the center of town, and, and start a, a marijuana-growing or processing business, or whatever.
Mary DeMastin.
What are you gonna, is there other people in line before you? You're gonna speak of why there's five different ones?
Yes. Thank you. Marilyn Sedoti, Glenwood Road. I am the chairman of the bylaw subcommittee and also on the planning board. The issue here that makes this very complicated is that there are eight different categories of grow, of marijuana licenses. And if we vote no on the first article, then, then it's over, then there's no consideration of any of the other articles. So, the, the purpose of the other articles is if there is a yes vote, then we can vote by, pretty much by licenses as to whether or not we want those, uh, facilities in the town. So, hopefully, that clarifies the amount of, of articles, a little bit anyway.
I think you had the right idea, you just had it backwards. If we vote in favor of it...
Then we can, then we, then we continue voting.
No, just the opposite.
In favor of the article.
Correct. In favor of the article, then we really don't need to vote on the other article.
Right, because it's a negative article. So, sorry about that, folks, but, and this, the principle still stands. Based on the vote of the first article, then we move on to the rest of them, or we don't. And the last article, the, the one on, that's a, not a zoning bylaw, it's a general rule, uh, bylaw, is ju, is the fail-safe, uh, method, but, if we, you know, it's a fail-safe. And I think that if we vote yes on the first one, then we would go, jump to the last article. Thank you.
Hi, Kurt Munzner, Eight Wheeler Road. Uh, this has been an issue for many of us for the last fifteen years. We voted in Massachusetts two years ago for us to pass, because a lot of people see it as no different than alcohol. Some people still have a hard time with the stigmatism that comes across this, uh, sorry about that. Some people have a stigmatism about, you know, legalizing weed. Um, I get that, but at the same point in time, it is legal. And so, you know, it's a great opportunity as a town to get a great amount of income. Um, look at Lester, we'll be opening tomorrow, and they're predicting lines up, up and down the street. North Hampton opens up tomorrow, they're gonna be up and down the street as well. We may miss this opportunity to get a great source of income if we wait too much longer. Um, so, you know, maybe we don't want every article approved, but we definitely should be considering some of them, um, to vote. So, to vote completely no on this first part of it, I feel is missing a great opportunity for us to look at different aspects of this bill that could allow us to get some additional income to this town. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Javi was next, if it matters.
Peter Pacerb, 20 Highland Park Road. Frankly, as we consider this, I would, I would recommend that we would take into deep consideration, not only the financial implications, but the implications as far as how this changes, how this would change the character of the town.
We vote no?
I'm sorry. How this would change the character of the town. Uh, I, I, my understanding is that marijuana is a lot stronger than it was in years past. One thing we can, uh, one thing is that if the dynamics of the town changes, we could always have somebody come in and repeal this, or seek to make a motion to repeal this bylaw. But if we allow it, and if somebody comes in, we can't change it. We're stuck with it. The other thing we need to keep in mind is that when this town voted on question four, it was a narrow defeat, but it was a defeat. The town voted, the town voted no. I think that needs to be given much consideration, as well as the liability on the town, the town law enforcement. And I think that since we have this, uh, information from the town council regarding Article 23, I would speak very highly in favor of passing Article 20.
Kevin Javi, Hillside Road. I just wanted to clarify from my earlier question, if all five of these are turned down, if they all pass, so to sp, if they all pass, does that mean that an establishment that is fully medical could still open its doors in Rutland in a short amount of time? Meaning, Lester has been open for, I'm not sure how many years, I think it's been a year or two as a medical establishment, solely medical. You need a license, you need a card, a doctor's note. This is all based on non-medical recreational use. So, just to clarify, a medical establishment, or medical cultivator, or medical industry could still come into Rutland? Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
The lawyer shook his head yes.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
Is there any other discuss?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to know, we're, we're talking about non-medical establishments, we've set aside different zones for them, how many establishments are we talking about? What's the maximum? What can we put in this place?
At present, we are limiting the, uh, medical, uh, the non-medical marijuana establishments to, I believe it's twenty percent of the sale, uh, yeah, liquor establishments, selling liquor, uh, for use not on the premises, not those liquor stores. Twenty percent. For the number that we have right now, that means one. We also wrote into, uh, not in this, in this particular article, but on the one that does allow some establishments, uh, they are all, uh, allowed only by special permit, and we are limiting it to five total special permits, and only one establishment type in each one of the permits.
So, there's a possibility of five?
Not at present.
Not at present, but it could be. Okay.
Retail.
And...
You get a hundred.
So, that one could be all-inclusive. They could be a grower, or they can't. You can only have one of each. So, right now, so if this passes, whoever decides to do it, if he's a grower, he, that's it. We can't bring in anybody else then.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If this does pass and we have one of each to, is it possible, or has it ever been done in the past where the people that may apply for these licenses may have, um, I've just heard a lot of the people that are making a lot of this money in a lot of areas are from California, and they're from all these other places. Do we have something in place where we could look at somebody that might be more local? Is there, are there commissions, or are there statewide, you know, where people put their name on a list and they say, "I wanna, you know, grow, and I wanna do this"? Is there areas that we can try to keep it local, is my question? No? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
There, excuse me, moderator, she had her hand up.
I'm sorry? Please.
I just wanted to say that, uh, some of the, the regular...
We, we probably can't hear you. You gotta come to the podium, please.
Uh, just wanted to say that there, some of, uh, some of the licenses are directly, the words, I am missing the word I want, but some of the licenses are to encourage local establishments with local, you know, local people, and that was a very, uh, the commission that came up with all these rules and regulations were very specific about that.
Peter Pacerb, again, 20 Highland Park Road. I just realized I spoke on the wrong article. I meant to say not Article 20, but passing Article 19. My apologies.
Hi, I'm Kyle Carpenter, nine Olivia Lane.
Are you supposed to face me?
You guys, okay? There's been a lot of confusion about these articles. Uh, I really think that there is some pretty common sense ways of looking at them. The idea of what you voted on, actually before I was a resident of your town, I became a resident after this vote was taken originally in 2016, was a moral question in my mind of, do you believe this should be allowed in our city or not? And that question, while this town voted, I believe by forty votes, no, the state voted yes to that. This is going to happen in our state. We should benefit from that. Now, a lot of people tend to think there's going to be marijuana dispensary or... Now, a lot of people tend to think there's going to be marijuana dispensary or cultivation of marijuana in our town, that the town is going to change. However, a lot of towns, including Holden, I believe, has already voted no. People are going to come from out of town to our town, spend money in our town, and then leave. You're not going to have people getting high on the streets, running around. It's no different than with anything else that's a specialty. If you have a brewery, people go to that brewery and then they leave. But in this case, you can't smoke it there, so you don't have to worry about anyone in town getting high right outside the door and, you know, causing a problem in town. We get revenue from this, tax money, and then the people leave. So, we have very little consequences, and I don't believe that it will change the character of our town in any negative way at all. I really, really hope that you guys consider that in the small amount of people that we have in this room that are going to decide it. I really hope that you vote no, yes, 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 no.
Darren Unfrick, 14 Wheeler Road. Just a couple stats for you, and then just another personal quick story. I don't, I don't work in Cambridge, but I work in Cambridge sometimes. And a lot of places where I park my car, as soon as I open up that door, the very first thing I smell is marijuana smoke. So, it's not the best, you know, it's not the best thing. So, that's just one piece of story. And then there's a couple, a couple data points from a Department of Public Health study, where basically they, they said that the state could raise up to $150 million in taxes in 2020. So, we're going to get, you know, we're going to see some of that money from the state. So, that's 150 million. Don't know, I would not say that. From low dense, low-density towns in the state of Massachusetts will raise no more than $70,000 per year in taxes. So, you're basically, you know, there's a good chance you're trading, I don't know, I would say the character of the town for $70,000 in taxes, not including whatever additional costs there are going to be, potentially increased police surveillance, who knows? So, we are going to see money from the state, 150 million dollars. The amount we're going to be collecting doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Laurie Becker, 18 Crestview Drive. I guess I'm just, I get the fact of, you know, this could be a revenue for the town, and I appreciate that, but I'm personally struggling as a mom who is teaching my kids it's wrong to do drugs, don't do drugs, that's what we teach our children, but yet we say, "But if we can make a buck, let's go for it". I struggle with that.
Hi, Jeff Haynes, 4 William Circle. A lot of good points been made. I'd point out this, you know, in the last five years alone, the budget for this town has grown by 25%. That's not going to slow down, it's not going to change. We need additional sources of revenue. Trying to grow to fiscal solvency through residential development doesn't happen. I've lived all over this country, doesn't happen. You need business. Now, endorsing any of these tonight beyond the one we're looking at right now, endorsing any of these doesn't mean that they're all going to come steamrolling in tomorrow. This simply gives our town the chance to review these on a case-by-case basis and see if it's a good fit. I looked at the Rutland Heights master plan earlier today. I'm sure a lot of you did too, right? It's interesting. That is 21 years old. 21 years old, we've been waiting to develop business in this town where the hospital used to be. And I'm very glad that we might have some soul coming in there. I think that's fantastic. I'm elated, actually, but we've been waiting over 20 years to see something grow on that. This town needs business development, and we'd be foolish to cut off opportunities before they even present themselves, especially when we're not saying, "Come in tomorrow, everybody", what we are saying is the town has the tools to evaluate these things and see what's a
Kurt Munzner, Eight Wheeler Road. I've heard the concern from one of the town members about drug use, talking about your children. We have to think about this as not a drug that we were told when we were kids in the 70s, 80s, 60s, whatever. We need to treat this more like alcohol. And one thing I do want to point out, in Colorado, since it's been legalized, heroin usage has dropped over 4%, which is really the drug that most people are concerned with. Marijuana, yes, it may be stronger, but we have to understand, stronger is compared to what? You know, you can get a shot of alcohol that's stronger than a beer, you know? You can eat, you know, a chocolate bar that's baked with marijuana oils, or made with marijuana oils, you're not going to die from it. You cannot consume enough marijuana to kill yourself. You would have to eat so many pounds of marijuana to actually hurt yourself physically, that's not possible. We have to understand the limitations of what this drug is, and how people have voted in this state, over 63%, to allow this to be legalized. There's a 3% sales tax that the town can invoke to get income. As soon as we do that, the sooner we're going to have more people come here as a destination. Holden, the surrounding towns have already said no to this. They're going to come here, instead of us going to Holden, it would be nice to see them come to us. So, anyways, it's a great way to get income, and I feel that we need to move on past the stigmatism that many people have about this legalized drug that we, as a voting populace of Massachusetts, had... Okay.
Ian Kinley, 31 Maple Ave. One of the things we're not discussing here, and we haven't brought up at all, is the state. The state has got this so regulated that nobody's walking in the door here tomorrow. Everybody has to be approved through the whole state agency. They have a commission that is so tight, right now it's ridiculous. You have two opening, and look at how long it took them to open. Cultivation, other things that are happening, they've got the labs, they're checking everything. So, just think about that, it's not tomorrow that this is happening. We're looking at giving it an approval to look at. That's all. It's going to take, could take years before somebody even came in here. So, just remember, the state is regulating it.
Good evening. Matt Finucci, O'Birchwood Road. Just like to say that unregulated marijuana, which is still being distributed by drug dealers, still has the potential of having contamination, still has the ability and the, still has the ability to be contaminated by other illicit drugs, such as fentanyl, which is incredibly potent and toxic substance, which is everywhere now. On top of it, the ABC, which is the Alcoholics Beverage Commission, is basically going to have the same type of organization, which is going to regulate and monitor the sale of marijuana. It's foolish to get rid of income for the town, and voting yes and not prohibiting it will do good things for this town. And also, the, last point is now moot. But yes, I would say vote yes to not prohibit the town by law.
No.
Okay. You all know, it's backwards. And finally, local government is important to have. It's another answer on top of state government, so please vote accordingly.
I think everybody's getting sick of this, but I, I just have one question. In the very beginning, it sounded like we have a choice. We either take what the state is going to give us, or is going to require of us, and I'm kind of looking at town council here for help, I don't want to put you on the spot, or we vote what we, you know, what we, the town wants. So, I'm all for not having state government force something down our throats that we don't want, and, and having the ability to choose on our own. So, is there a way that you can perhaps highlight maybe the top three things that the state's going to say, "This is what you've got to do, and what we're doing, how that's, what we're doing, how is it going to be better"? Am I making? Is that a kind of a clear question? Probably as clear as mud, eh?
No, it's clearer than mud. But I don't know that I could give you the top three. I think, I think what you need to recognize is that obviously the, the vote on question four statewide was, was a yes. The town of Rutland voted no on question four, meaning that the town of Rutland voted against legalization of marijuana in Massachusetts. What that means is that Rutland gets to do certain things that a yes town doesn't get to do. And specifically, it's to regulate whether it's going to allow marijuana facilities, recreational marijuana, again, not, we're not talking about medical marijuana, specifically with respect to adult-use recreational marijuana. The town of Rutland has the opportunity to decide on its own whether to prohibit altogether in Rutland. If the town had voted yes, that would have required not only a voted town meeting, but also a ballot question. So, you don't need a ballot question, what's decided tonight is decided. What we're looking at is essentially a menu of options. If you don't vote to prohibit or regulate, what, what that means is, provided that a, an establishment gets its license from the state through the Cannabis Control Commission and fits within your existing bylaw, it will be able to locate in, in a district that, that meets the requirements of the state, so certain setbacks, certain specific requirements, distance from schools, distance from, from, from areas used by childrens. There are certain specific regulations on the state side that would apply, but you would not be regulating it yourself. The reason we have five different warrant articles before us, and I know that that's already been discussed, but just real briefly, the reason you have that as opposed to having one article is, these each, each follow one in one another. So, they get, decreasing, decreasing levels of restriction depending on what this body does. So, this allows you to decide, do you want to do a full-on prohibition, none at all, no, no adult-use recreational marijuana in Rutland at all? Do you want to back off and allow them in specific districts? Do you want to prohibit just, just retailers? So, you're, you're working your way down a menu. And that gives essentially the town the opportunity to make those decisions for itself, because having voted no, the town, right here at town meeting, gets to make that decision.
Okay. So, I think what you just said sums it up, that, that we're able to make the decision for ourselves rather than being told by the state what they want us to do.
You have an opportunity tonight to make an actual decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Does everybody understand what we're voting on? We are voting on Article 19, and it'll be full prohibition. Simple label terms, no marijuana, no marijuana in town unless it's medical. Correct? Simple? Does everybody understand? So, a no vote, no marijuana unless you're medical. A yes vote, allow us all marijuana.
No.
Oh, maybe I need to smoke some to make you feel better. Does everybody understand what they're voting on, and I'll stop talking? Yes is prohibited. No, it's not. All those in favor, raise your cards. Oh, this is two-thirds, we're going to have to count. Please, Mr. Jarvie and Mr. Senico, please count. All those in favor, please raise your cards. 22 yeses, 67 noes. The motion has failed. Moving on to Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to allow non-medical marijuana establishments with certain types of establishments permitted in certain districts in the town of Rutland, subject to the special permit, into a slight plan review, and for such purposes, to delete the text entitled of Article 12, Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments, and insert in, place therefore a new Article 12 marijuana establishments, all as set forth in handouts entitled, November 19th, 2018, Special Town Meeting, Article 20, Regulations of Non-Medical Marijuana Establishments, also on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the town clerk to assign appropriate numbering to this bylaw in order that it will be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaws or act in any other manner in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws to regulate non-medical marijuana establishments in the town of Rutland, and approve Article 20 as set forth in the warrant, and to change any reference to the Rutland Economic Development Corporation in the handout entitled, November 19th, 2018, Special Town Meeting, Article 20, Regulation of Non-Medical Marijuana Establishments, to the Rutland Development and Industrial Commission.
Does this motion receive support? Made, motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion? Oh, I need your report and recommendation.
The Planning Board recommends consideration of this article.
And your report?
The report has been submitted, it was available to the voters.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to make sure that...
Who are you?
Oh, Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road. I'm not tall enough for this thing. I just want to make sure that I understand it correctly, and that everyone understands correctly, that basically, as I get it, Article 20 and Article 22 are very, very similar, allowing non-medical marijuana, but 20 basically says all establishments are okay. 21's taxed, that's different. 22 basically says we can do everything except retail sales. Is this correct? Yes.
Norman Anderson is behind you, shaking his head yes. Is there any other discussion on this article?
Question, if Article 20 passes, Article 22 is irrelevant? Irrelevant? Okay.
The answer from the lawyer was yes. Is there any other?
Just a question. If 20 fails, shouldn't 22 be before 21?
I don't number.
Or, or is there no tax except for retail, anyway? Oh, okay.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? This is also a two-thirds vote. Counters, please. I'm sorry, guys, you've got to count it. All, all those in favor signify by raising your hands. All those in favor signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. You have 66 yeses, 18 noes. This motion carries. Two-thirds. Moving on to Article 21, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of GL Section 64N, Section S3, to allow a 3% local tax on all sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town of Rutland or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the provisions of General Watch after 64N, Section 3, to allow a 3% local tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town of Rutland.
Does this motion receive support? Second, recommendation to the finance?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorably in this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Well, no, he's got to get up. He knows that. No.
Ian McKinley, 31 Maple Ave. Question, I heard on Lester on the news today for tomorrow, they're saying a 20% tax. Is that state and the town? Or is that, is that Lester themselves putting a 20%? And are we giving up too much? Okay, so there must be a total 17 from the state and three from, okay.
17 is the state.
Was the state and three from, okay. So three is the max allowed, is that what you said?
3% is the max allowed for the town.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, this is majority, so we're hopefully not going to use our counters, maybe. All those in favor signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? Motion carries, majority. Moving on to Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws.
No good.
I still have to read it, don't I? He says yes, you say no. I would allow, I can allow a motion to no action on all these? Mr. Viner, is that moved by you? Is it seconded? Is there any discussion? Discussion on no action?
Just a question as far as, doesn't 22 just further, it regulates Article 20, correct? Because it reduces the retail sales. Whereas in 20, retail sales are allowed, but in 22, they're not.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, actually, 20 and 22 are somewhat inconsistent. 22 is further regulation. 22 allowed all types of adult-use recreational marijuana. 22 would be inconsistent with what was just voted on 20. So if folks had, actually had wanted to prohibit retail use, I guess you'd have to have a reconsideration of 21 and vote against that in order to allow 22 to be effective. Otherwise, you'll have two inconsistent warrant articles voted.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All we're voting on now is to not vote on the next two articles. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Kanakioli.